All right, welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the February 10, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Gibbs, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
As we gather here tonight to discuss the issues of our city, I thank you all for your participation, for coming to the meetings, for watching on TV, and just communicating with all of the elected officials and city employees during the week when you see them at Starbucks or Proving Grounds. For me, it's the residents and the business owners, the business owners and operators, that are truly the heart of the city and truly the backbone of the city. So, thank you. I'm in.
I'm in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item number four on our agenda, which is a proclamation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the American Legion Frank Wenland Post 253. And I see we have a lot of members here tonight. I'm going to come down there and read the proclamation. I think we have, well, I see John's here, I see Ed, and we have Jack and Don as well. John, if you want to come on up, we'll read it up here and present it.
Right here.
Yeah. All right, this is truly a great honor for me to read this. A lot of Royal Oak history here. This is a proclamation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the American Legion Frank Wenland Post 253. Whereas at the conclusion of the First World War, soldiers returned to Royal Oak and could be seen gathering in groups around town to talk with each other about their war experiences. And whereas on February 10, 1920, Lieutenant Colonel Augustus Ganser of Bay City gave a stirring address to 25 ex-servicemen in the auditorium of the Royal Oak High School. And whereas inspired by the words of Lieutenant Colonel Ganser, the ex-serviceman founded American Legion Post 253. And whereas Frank Wenland was a well-known Royal Oak resident who had been one of the first to answer the call to duty. And whereas Frank Wenland served his country with bravery and distinction and one of the most dangerous assignments a soldier can have. He was a sharpshooter in the United States Army and answered his last call in October 1918. And whereas since its founding, the Frank Wenland Post 253 has been welcoming veterans from all branches of the armed forces, carrying out their mission to implement goals, aspirations, dreams, peace, blessings for our country, friends, and families. And whereas the importance of the Frank Wenland Post 253 to the Royal Oak community is beyond measure, and Royal Oak is honored to be the home of Frank Wenland Post 253. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, on behalf of the entire Royal Oak community hereby extend our congratulations to the American Legion Frank Wenland Post 253 on their 100th anniversary and wish them another 100 years of continued success. Sir.
I thank the city council members and my fellow colleagues. I humbly and proudly accept this proclamation on behalf of Frank Wenland Post 253, American Legion. Today is a very special day for the members of our post. First, with recognition by the city of our 100-year anniversary. And secondly, it was exactly 100 years ago today, February 10, 1920, that 25 veterans from World War I assembled and held their very first meeting of Frank Wenland American Legion Post at the then Royal Oak City High School. Since that first meeting, members of our post have contributed tens of thousands of dollars and many thousands of hours of work to assist fellow veterans when they needed a little bit of help. And secondly, we have always kept in mind to make sure that the community would consider us an asset and would look upon us as a veterans' organization that they could be proud of. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask John Wenland, he's our post historian, to please get into the podium. John, as our historian, I'm going to turn the stewardship of this proclamation over to you. Would you please see that it's displayed prominently and proudly?
I'd be proud to.
Thank you.
It's nice to see such a strong attendance from Frank Wenland Post here tonight. You're ever-present in our community. I can't think of a community event that I'm not at where either somebody is participating, offering guidance, or, in a lot of cases, with John, taking pictures. We appreciate everything you do in our community and certainly the network that you provide for our soldiers coming home. So, thank you for everything you do in Royal Oak. So, this brings us to item number five, which is the Detroit Institute of Arts presentation of the 2020 Community Programs. I think Julie McFarland is here today. Hi, Julie.
Hello, good evening. My name is Julie McFarland. I'm a Public Affairs Officer at the Detroit Institute of Arts. Dave Flynn, who's also in Public Affairs, was hoping he could be here, and he sent his apologies for not being able to make it tonight. I'm here with my colleague Sharon Harrell, who is a Community Engagement Officer at the museum as well. So, thank you for making time on your agenda tonight. I know that you have a full schedule, so I will be brief. The purpose of my visit here tonight is just to provide an overview of the four main ways the DIA serves residents of Oakland County and highlight just a few specific ways we work with the residents in Royal Oak here. Before diving in, a little bit about what makes the DIA such a special place. Every year, we welcome thousands of visitors to the museum for all kinds of reasons. First, of course, to see the art, attend live music events, enjoy a film in the film theater, do art-making in our studios, lots of different reasons people come down to the museum. We have 65 objects in the collection from around the globe, from ancient cultures to current times. We even have a little frog named Kermit who's on display. So, if anyone wants to see Kermit, he's kind of an old guy, doesn't get out for very long. So, if you have time in the next month or so, come down and visit him. So, in 2012, probably many of you know, voters from Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties approved a millage to support the DIA. Part of that process, after we received a positive millage vote, was the three counties established governing bodies. So, there's a governing body in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties, and they put together what we call service agreements, or guidelines for services that we provide to county residents in consideration of the millage. So, there's four areas: free admission, education programs, senior programs, and community partnership programs. And I'm just going to touch really briefly on each. So, the first one is free, general, unlimited admission. So, as an Oakland County resident, you are entitled to come to the museum every single day that we're open to the public without paying for your admission. Since 2012, we've had over 2 million tri-county residents take advantage of their free admission benefit. And in 2018, we had over 97,000 visits from Oakland County residents. The second service is our education programs. We try to tell people as much as we can that, and we're still working on making sure all schools know this, but K through 12 field trips are free to the museum. So, students come down, they get a tour, have lunch, and transportation is free. So, we pay for that transportation for all the students in Oakland County to come down to the museum. It's really been a game-changer for a lot of schools who otherwise couldn't afford a visit to the museum. Since 2012, we've brought nearly close to a half a million students to the museum on free field trips with transportation. Part of the service agreement sets some parameters. So, in Oakland County, we need to bring down 16,000 students a year. From the time the millage started, that has not been a problem. We hit that 16,000 number, and then we just keep going till everyone's been able to come to the museum. So, in 2019, we had over 21,000 students come from Oakland County. We had a little bit over 1,400 students from Royal Oak come. So, lots of the schools in Royal Oak are taking advantage of this benefit of the millage. In addition to that, the other part of our education program is teacher professional development. So, we have lots of options for teachers to come down to the museum, from really light-touch things like sneak peeks at exhibitions, to teacher appreciation breakfasts, revitalize, restore mornings, to sort of deeper dives, things like three-day visual thinking strategies workshops and other workshops that help them take that experience in the museum back to the classroom and make connections to the work that they're doing. So, the field trip experience extends beyond just the day that they come to the museum. So, those are the first two areas. The third part of the service agreement deals with senior programs. So, every Thursday, we have a senior program at the museum. This also includes group transportation. So, if a senior group wants to come down, they have 25 people or more, we'll send a bus for them as well. This is every Thursday. We have a variety of activities. It rotates from museum tours to art-making classes, films, lectures, musical performances. Our team is always trying to think of different things to invite our seniors down to on Thursdays. If you're not part of a group, you're certainly welcome to join us with your own transportation. We have lots of groups that come from Royal Oak. Royal Oak Manor Co-op, Royal Oak Senior Center, and Village of Royal Oak all came for multiple visits in 2019. And then the last area is our community partnership programs. We've done a lot in Royal Oak and with Royal Oak. We just signed a three-year partnership with OCC last fall, and that is going to include just really helping OCC define this Royal Oak campus as their arts and culture campus. We support arts, beats, and eats by programming the children's stage, dropping art-making workshops. I know we're at Clay and Glass and Fire, I think it is, every year. So, community partnership programs are just our way to bring DIA experiences out into the community, but also help community organizations enhance arts and culture in their own neighborhoods. And then the other, another example of community partnership programs is our Inside Out program, which many of you may be familiar with. We bring high-quality reproductions of work from the museum, over 100 different outworks into the community, and kind of turn these communities into outdoor art exhibits that sort of highlight things that are going on in the city, landmark locations and such. We brought Inside Out to Royal Oak in 2012 and 2014, and it looks like, I think, with that inspired some of the work that the Royal Oak Arts Commission's doing with the artwork in the community that you guys have today. That's sort of the end of the overview of my presentation. I just want to emphasize how transformative the millage has been for the museum in helping make all these wonderful programs possible. And we hope that you'll share this information with your neighbors, friends, constituents, so that more people can take advantage of everything that we have to offer through the millage.
Thank you, Mrs. McFarland. Any questions, comments? Yeah, thank you for making it out here tonight. I can't speak, obviously, for any other community, but I can think firsthand here in Royal Oak, we've been a direct beneficiary of the work that you're doing through the millage. So, we're very grateful for what you do at the DIA. So, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. I have a few materials. I'll probably just leave here that you can take and learn a little bit more, and ways to connect with us, and contact information to connect with some of these activities.
Perfect. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right. All right, well, we got everybody on one side of the room and two on the left, all right. Well, this brings us to item number six, which is public comment. A few words before we begin public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission both issues on the agenda and issues that aren't on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there'll be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the City Tavern's request for approval of plan of operation, you can wait till that time, and we'll have another public comment. All the same rules apply. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or at the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Because the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. We typically get emails throughout the week or even up to the Commission meeting. So, email's fine, telephone calls are fine as well. Please note that the City Commission won't directly respond to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and when that topic comes up, we'll ask those questions on your behalf. And if you're up here talking about something that isn't on the agenda tonight, our city manager's taking notes and follows up accordingly with your questions and concerns. So, with that, who's first tonight? Well, I saw the fast hand of Mr. Colo. Come on up, Mr. Colo. Ms. Dumas.
My name is Emily Dumas. I'm 825 West Houstonia, and I'm here to represent the library tonight. And I am here with Brandon Colo from the library board. We are here tonight to present the library's annual report that covers our fiscal year from 2018, actually starts on July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. Just a little bit about what our annual report covers. It's financial information that covers our revenues and expenditures for the year, and also statistical information that talks about our operating activities. It also includes a director's letter and a year-end review that highlights some of the good things that have happened throughout the year. There will be copies available online, but also anybody in the public who's interested can pick up a copy in the library. I am going to turn it over to Brandon, who's going to tell you about some of the report highlights from this last year.
Thanks, Emily. Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, the library had another great year. For the second year in a row, we saw summer reading increase again and again. More kids are coming out, more families are coming out. So, it's a really good time for the library. In the report, as Emily said, there's statistical information, a lot of financial information as required by city code. We report this every year. The library enjoys a millage thanks to the Citizens Royal Oak, keeps us funded, keeps us providing these great new opportunities. In the last year, we saw, like I said, the increase in summer reading. We also opened up the 11 Mile Road entrance for the first time, thanks to a very generous grant from the Central Park Development Group. That $10,000 allowed us to revamp the doors and open them up, and our nice new neighbors helped accommodate that. In addition to that, we also saw the number of programs increase by 13%. That was 67 more programs, I believe, and a 48% increase in the attendance of these programs. So, Royal Oakers are again out there and taking advantage of the great programming that Emily and her staff are providing. Speaking of Emily, we have a new director, so...
Busy year.
Yeah, it's been a very busy year. Mary Carshen retired in January. She let us know she was leaving. We had a really nice search, and Emily was the best choice we could make. So, Emily is a native Royal Oaker, has done a great job leading the library. So, beyond that, the statistics you see are a little skewed. We had a door counter that stopped working, so it looks like our visitors have decreased. So, we acknowledge it, we see it, but if you look at every other metric, we're increasing. We're loaning out more items, we have more people coming programming. So, we believe that that is a blip that will be corrected this year. So, coming back around, this year, we also did a strategic plan. We realized the value of strategic planning, how important it is to be involved with their staff to make sure that they share the same goals and values that we do. And one of those goals and values was a improvement. So, we're in the process of there right now, and Emily wants to tell you about it.
Yes, we're going to have a major interior improvement in the library. It's going to cover new furniture, new flooring, new carpeting, paint, a remodel of the teen area, a maker space, a remodel of the downstairs, a creation of a bigger play area. Some things are like a new computer, a new laptop bar, a new lounge area, a fireplace. So, lots of great things coming. What I wanted to remind people of is that we are seeking public input. Beginning on Monday, February 17, at 11:00 a.m., we're going to have our first session. We're inviting the public in. There's going to be a self-guided tour around the library, and then the public will have a chance to ask questions of the library board and myself, and also give feedback about what they'd like to see in the new library. The first session is February 17, 11:00 a.m. Later that night, there's going to be one at 7:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, February 22, there will be one at 11:00 a.m. We did many great things this last year or two, but looking ahead, there are many things on their highs and that we're very excited about. The biggest one would probably be the library interior improvement. But also, we have a book sale coming up that is hosted by the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library is a group that, they generate revenues from the sales of books that support all library programming for all ages. The book sale will be March 5 through 8. It begins on March 5 with a Friends members-only preview, but memberships can be purchased at the door starting at $10. Gently-used books and DVDs will be on sale for as low as 25 cents each. And also, we are going to be digitizing the formerly The Daily Tribune, now The Royal Oak Tribune. It's only been available in microfilm at the library and in actual newspaper copies dating back to 1866. It's going to be digitized for the first time. It's going to be fully indexed, searchable, and available on our website for anybody who wants to access it. That is it for us, I believe. Do you have anything else to add, Brandon?
Yeah, no.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Got a lot of work cut out for you this year. Good luck. Nice work. All right, who's next? Yes, sir. Yeah, if you can drop them off with our city clerk, Hallis, she'll make sure that she passes them down for us, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert from Robert Bruce Photography at 1412 East 11 Mile Road, Royal Oak, Michigan. I've had my business in Royal Oak for, on 11 Mile for the past 18 years, and this is my first time coming in front of you guys with any kind of complaint. So, it's not a complaint, but it's a concern. So, we've averaged out, there's about 4,000 cars across the lane going east on 11 Mile Road in front of our building during our hours of operation. On a bad snow day, as you can see from the photographs, the force from the snow, water, salt, rocks, and ice hitting my building is so great that it literally shakes the building from pooling water caused from bad road gutter point directly in front of our building. As far as I know, I'm the only business on 11 Mile Road between Main and Campbell that has this issue. I had two broken windows from this and numerous complaints from customers being sprayed. I have not submitted any damage caused to the city and have taken care of this matter on my own up to this point. This is damaging to the windows, brick, mortar, and signage to my building, not to mention an eyesore, as you can see from the photos, from the salt degradation and mud on the facet of the building throughout the winter. It is also a hazard to pedestrians and patrons entering my building and simply walking down the street. It is impossible to keep the sidewalk clear of ice and snow because it is immediately thrown back on the entire sidewalk, as shown in the pictures, within seconds after I remove it. Numerous clients have been hit with force from water and mud while entering through my front door. And if you know our studio, we work with everybody from Prime Minister Tony Blair to Walt Disney, I mean, we do some, and babies and kids. So, anyhow, this is an issue caused from bad guttering in the curb. The road that is causing the pool in front of my building, it's level and flat directly in front of my building. It's the only spot on 11 Mile that doesn't have a level to go down to the sewers. And then, I've had a private inspector come by, who's a supervisor that works for the city and county roads with MDOT, who's inspected it and verified my findings. I have been addressing this issue for the past three winters. Jason Krieger, who was also the previous owner, has addressed this issue to the city during his time of ownership. I understand 11 Mile may or may not be redone by the year 2025. If the city is unwilling to do the curb grade to create a slope needed because of the slope being level in front of my building, because the water does not flow east in front of the building to go down into the sewer, then I ask that I can have a variance to continue to put this vinyl barrier up during snow periods to protect my building and customers from being injured or in damage to my property. I did submit photographs to the city and plans. I did submit to engineering to bill that should be on your desk the next week or two, and I have, you know, paid the $350 thing. So, basically, you guys are probably driven by my building and seen that I had this vinyl thing on, and we've had a contractor make sure everything is, you know, to code, but just to kind of protect it, because I know the road's costly, and I was, the president of 11 Mile has it all, so I know, you know, that right now is probably not a good time for Royal Oak to do it. So, I'm just trying to prevent, you know, this kind of a reoccurring thing until we can get that portion or all of 11 Mile done. And it is temporary. I can put it up and take it down within four minutes. My intentions are only to do it when I know that the snow's going to hit, and then I take it down once that... The picture you see, too, of the curb, that was from Saturday when we had an inch of snow. It gets way worse. It pulls a lot further out, but I just, that was a current photograph, so... But I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Robert. And I know we exchanged an email or two on it, and I have a little follow-up to do, and I'll be talking with the city manager. I think we just haven't connected yet on it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, you guys.
Mr. Hallig.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate your time. I'd like to address item N on your consent agenda, which is approval of proposed First Amendment to Billings Place Planned Unit Development. And before I get going, I would like to acknowledge that the developer hired an absolutely fantastic construction crew. They do everything they're supposed to. They notify us, they keep it totally clean. Everything is gone at night when they go home. They never start early, they never run late, they never run on Sunday. They do everything they're supposed to. It's the best construction crew I've seen around the city ever. That being said, at the beginning of every meeting, we are told that public input is appreciated, and we like it. However, when this project went up, it is 70% larger than it's supposed to be, and our objections from the neighborhood for the two stories taller than it's supposed to be was completely ignored. You didn't actually even address a single word about it, and that was what our complaints were, was not that that was going in there, and three stories would have been fine, but you utterly ignored anything the neighbor had to say. And here we have a modification to it, which will put balconies on the fifth floor aimed at our neighborhood, and you have no idea how loud that's going to be. When you do that, and it's something I regret, is when they put up North Main, did you know that you can stand in front of our house over 400 feet away and hear everything they say on those balconies, like you're standing right here with me? You can have a conversation with them? That's the kind of noise that you get from the size of the building echoing back. And here, you're putting this modification to put balconies up on top, or larger patios, on the consent agenda. It's not going to the Plan Commission. There's no public hearings. There's no nothing. You're just sliding it by. We don't get any notification, nothing. That's completely disreputable. You have no business operating like that. If you're going to do a modification to a PUD that is 70% bigger than it's supposed to be to begin with, you need to talk to people. You need to get some input. I know you're going to vote for it anyway, because it ought to have happened last time, but how about at least putting through the appearances of trying to pay attention to what your residents actually want or have to say? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallack. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and City Commissioners, Margaret Cope, 538 Mount Vernon. I'm here about permits. 18 months ago, I had to have an air conditioning unit replaced and went with a company that had a 39-year reputation I had worked with before. They had a stellar, everything went fine. Unfortunately, I recently learned that both the mechanical and electrical permits on that air conditioning replacement expired. I didn't know what that meant, so I called, I believe it was the building area. The woman that I talked to said there was something I could do about it because the permit was between the contractor and the city, and I would have to contract, I would have to connect with the contractor. This is where everything went south. I contacted the contractor and found out that this gentleman sold his business, his name, his phone, his contact list, and his reputation to a less-than-reputable heating and cooling company who has less than a stellar reputation, who is operating under their name. The gentleman who I initially contacted with, he or his son, they share the first name, so I'm not able to determine who it is, is still working for that company under the old name. They will not, I understand that from when a permit expires, that it has to be reissued. They will not, they refuse to reissue the permit because they said they didn't do the work, and therefore they won't stand behind it, even though they're operating under the same name. They won't, I have a workman warranty for both the work and the labor that's still in effect, won't honor that. I called the building department back, and the woman said she couldn't, she didn't know. So she transferred me to Jason Craig, excuse me. He was not available, and I left a message, and he never called me back. I had a second conversation with the new company, which went about as bad as the first conversation. I called Jason Craig back again, left another, he again wasn't available. I again left a message, and again I heard from no one. My complaint with this is that if a city requires a homeowner to get a permit, and the permit, and the homeowner has no say-so over that permit, there should be some way that the city notifies the homeowner when there's a problem with that permit. This is not my first go-around with permits. Four years ago, I came before the city commissioner, four, three, I know for sure, and I believe it was four, sat right where y'all are sitting now, in different seats, but in the same place. I had a roof installed that failed an inspection. The only way I knew about that failed inspection was the contractor put a big yellow permit on my front door and said, "Don't remove that permit until the city comes out physically, writes on that permit that it has passed, and don't throw that signed permit away." A month went by, didn't hear anything from the city, nobody signed off on my permit. I called the city inspector and was told, "Hey, your roof failed." I said, "Well, when were you going to notify me?" "Oh, we don't notify. It's a, it's an issue between the contractors. You're going to have to get in touch with the contractor." Called the contractor, the contractor had no idea that the roof had failed because he had not been notified. That issue got resolved, but when I called the woman back to tell her that the contractor did not know that the roof had failed, her laissez-faire comment to me was, "Well, I guess it just slipped through the cracks." Well, it was a major problem, would have been a major problem for me, because that's going against my parcel ID. I have, I'm upset because I'm back here four years later with the same issue with permits and not, and the homeowner not having any say-so. Several concerns, one being that I think in this day and age, it would be very easy for the building department to automate letters to homeowners when there is a pending dismissal or failure of a, I don't, I can't, I've lost the word now, who's lost the failed inspection or who has an expired permit coming up. There's no reason, you send out letters for everything else. I don't understand why. I paid for those permits. It was written into my contract.
Ms. Cope, I need you to finish your last thought. I'm sorry.
Okay, give me a couple minutes. I cannot get this resolved. I also have a problem with the city when you say, "Call," and we'll get back to you. Nobody called me back. Nobody delegated an initial person to call me back. And if you're going to be out of the office for a period of time, I think you can put an out-of-office on your, on your voicemail. At this point, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I'm caught between a rock and a hard place. I did a little search in my little neck of the woods and in a whole lot of other neighborhoods around Royal Oak, and noticed that there are a whole lot of folks who are sitting on expired permits and a lot who are sitting on failed inspections, who I bet don't know any more than I do. And they're going to be in for a big, wide whoa when it comes time to do a title search on their parcel ID and it, and they can't clear it. I don't know what to do. Anybody has a suggestion? I'd really like to hear it, but my bottom line is, I think you folks need, if you're going to take and require permits, and I can look out my window and see that I have neighbors who do not get permits over and over and over again, and I play by the rules, and I'm caught. Something's really, really, really wrong. And four years ago, you didn't listen to me either. I hope you do this time.
Thank you, Ms. Cope. Mr. Gillum?
Yeah, I've got your information. Ms. Cope, I'll talk to Mr. Craig in the morning, and I'll get a report for the commission.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice? All right, we're going to bring the meeting to this side of the table. For those of you who wish to speak on the public hearing tonight, another opportunity to speak will be afforded under the same rules. So this brings us to item number seven, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Douglas?
Approval of the agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to item eight, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner LaVassar?
Items F and N.
F and N. Anybody else? Okay, the consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes, January 27th, claims from January 31st, approval of purchase order, declaration and disposal of surplus property, award of contract cap 2001-2020 concrete pavement replacement, award of contract cap 2005-2020 concrete pavement repair program, award of contract cap 2010-2020 water main improvements, award of contract cap 2025-2020 joint ceiling improvements, award of contract cap 2035-2020 road reconstruction improvements, award of contract cap 2050, which is 2020 community development block grant, Judson Avenue paving improvements, grant of easement of public water main on 5125 Meyer Drive, contract modification, contract S1903 spot sewer repairs, and receive and file the non-action items, which this time includes a January 2020 investment report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy, seconded by Commissioner Perusch. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote on the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Commissioner LaVassar, item F, and then item N.
Thank you. With regard to item F, this is with regard to bids for sidewalk improvements. And we received an email today from a resident who had two concerns, and just to paraphrase them, summarize them. Number one, he was looking at the bid amounts and seeing that there was a huge disparity and trying to understand why there might have been such a huge disparity between the two bids. That was number one concern that the resident raised. Number two was essentially a quality control issue with regard to previous work with, with the low bidder, and just, we're looking for some feedback from the engineer here on those two issues.
Mr. Callahan?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. There is quite a large disparity between the two bidders on this project. There's only these two companies that do sidewalk work in this type of quantity anymore. So Italia has traditionally been lower than Audia, and they both bid on the project. We found that, for the most part, Italia does fairly good work, and Audia does fairly good work. Dealing with both contractors in the past, and they've both had contracts with us in the past, we've had issues, not quality issues, but morally timing issues, getting them to finish the work in a timely manner. And we, because this is a much smaller project than we've run in the past, in the past, we've had more than a million dollars with the sidewalk work annually. This is a little more than half if you take Italia's prices as far as comparing to past projects. They seem to think they'll get the work done by sometime in July this year and not continue to go on into the fall months. So we do have some more safeguards we've written into our contracts as far as quality goes, and the fact that they have to make sure that if they go beyond the days that they say that they agree to and they're scheduled, then they're going to pay us additional costs or costs come out of their contract for the delays in their work. And of course, that's always a negotiated thing because there can be delays due to weather and other types of factors that are reasonably expected in any type of construction project. But we are confident that Italia can do the job, and they can do it for the prices that they have here and get done in a timely manner, and we'll definitely have staff available to watch and make sure that they do things the way they're supposed to.
Okay, so looking at the two bids, you're confident that they're both bidding apples and apples, and there wasn't some misunderstanding as to the scope of the work or anything of that nature between these two?
Yes, and in the past, Audia's prices were, you know, when we did award it to them, we were, we were, we had dealt with Italia for three years in a row. They had gone over the time of completion and into the following spring to finish their work. So we decided to try it out with Audia, and the prices were significantly higher. They've always traditionally been higher as a contractor. I'm not saying that relays into a better quality product. They, we also had issues with them as far as the timing and their request for extras that they wanted to be paid. But both companies are good companies. It's just a matter of, we believe that this is the best value for the homeowner. You know, we certainly don't want to charge people more than the minimum that we can, you know, the reasonable amount.
All right. Now, the issue they had with the quality control is not so much with the timing, I'm talking about the concerns the resident had that is expressed in the email, not so much in the timing as in the quality of the work product. And just, can you explain to us the safeguards to do follow-up if there's some defect in the work product?
Well, I'm not familiar with the homeowner who contacted you, what their, what their issue is with quality. We hear complaints from everybody, from many people regarding the quality of the finished concrete, the fact that, you know, when you saw through the sidewalks, the splatter gets up on their lawn or their fences or other areas. Yes, those things happen, and they end up on a punch list, and they have to be corrected before the contractor, before our contractors close out and they're allowed to start their warranty period. So their warranty doesn't start until the day we've accepted all of their work as being complete, and that includes the punch list items. So if there's any items of work that need to be done, whether it's the lawn areas that get damaged adjacent to the areas where we're building sidewalks, those things all get repaired eventually.
How long is the warranty period?
The warranty period is for one year.
Commissioner Macy?
So Mr. Callahan, you had told us previously that the standard for the mix you're using on the sidewalks is changing, I think this year, but maybe in the recent years, because my memory is there had, the mix you were using had been one that was approved, maybe for highways. Could you go through that again?
Well, there hasn't been another mix developed, but we can certainly work those things out with the contractor. They are responsible to keep this, to build a sidewalk that's going to be acceptable to us from flaking, scaling, that sort of thing. The mixes that MDOT uses for freeways has some small percentage of a material that can cause those things. The vast majority of the sidewalks that we build don't have those problems. So usually, it's a typical to a particular zone or a day that they might have done something. It's not always related to the materials they're using. It can be related to the fact that the homeowner, when they'll put on salt on it, which we recommend that they don't do, that can also cause the same problems to occur. So we have to reiterate to people to not salt their new sidewalks, which is hard to do because, you know, if we're replacing one piece in front of your house, how do you not salt that one when you salt the rest of them to keep the ice off? But it's not, it's not a big problem in as far as the vast majority of sidewalks that we do that we see these minor surface issues.
And if you're a resident who, you know, the sidewalk is laid, and then within, you know, weeks or something, you see this popping, crackling, they contact?
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's, and that's the kind of thing that could be replaced?
Those types of things, yes, those aren't expected, those aren't normal, and that would be something that the contractor would have to address.
Commissioner LaVassar?
A couple things. Number one, do we have any routine method of communication with residents, first alerting them as to not to use salt after a new sidewalk flag is put in? And number two, do we have some method of communication with residents informing them how to alert us if there's, if they see a problem with some new sidewalk in front of their home?
Well, we give out a letter to people with an actual cost estimate for what's in their property, and it has a limited amount of information. Thanks to Judy over there, we've kind of scaled back what's, how much information is in that letter, but it says, "If you have any concerns or problems at all, call the engineering department." That phone number's in there, the link to the website, which has a lot more information about sidewalks, how we build them, what they can look for, what to do and what not to do. And there's, that is our main mailing to the homeowners, and surprisingly, people still lose and dispose of those letters. But we work with the people as best as we can. We do not send them a second mailing to remind them of things that they should be doing or not doing.
Okay, so it's generic as far as, hey, if there's a problem, let us know, but it doesn't specifically reference salting, and it doesn't specifically reference, hey, we have a warranty period, contact us if there's an issue so that we can do something about that?
All that stuff is on the website. If it's not in the letter, it's on the website.
Is there also a door hanger? I feel like I remember from my time that right before they came, I also got a door hanger.
You get a door hanger on your door the day before if we have to block off your driveway. We don't want you to be blocked in your driveway to, if we remove those sidewalk flags across that area. People have appointments to get to and work and things, and so we give you a door hanger that says, "By, you know, midday tomorrow, we're going to be taking out the sidewalk in front of your driveway, so please, you know, park in the street as best as possible."
Just want to make sure we stay germane to the topic at hand, which is the contract in front of us. So if we want to talk about the process of the sidewalks, which several of us have endured over close to a decade now, but we do have a contract in front of us that was brought out. I think the question was, why are we going with the lowest bidder? I think the answer is evident. I think the engineer confirmed that, you know, there's really only two contractors that can do this scale of work. We had a complaint from a resident about some quality. We literally have thousands of flags every year that are replaced, and some are going to be, you know, not meet the test. That's the nature of construction and concrete, and there's a year warranty, and they get fixed. And engineering holds to the best of their ability. The contractor's accountable for their work, even withholding payment until things are completed and remedied. So I want to make a motion to move forward on the contract. Commissioner Dubbuck?
With the understanding that there's two qualified bidders, and staff has recommended the lowest qualified bidder, and we have experience with both of these companies, I'll move for the resolution as proposed by staff.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Perusch. Any further discussion on this? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Commissioner LaVassar, and from the consent agenda?
Thank you. What I'm concerned about is the placement of the, the proposed placement of the decks or balconies on the west side of the building that immediately neighbors a, a, a single-family residential neighborhood. And I'm wondering what the process would be to approve this, but to eliminate those decks.
I don't know if we have anyone here from planning.
No, Mr. Twing had a personal conflict tonight, so, I mean, the balconies that are proposed, it's two on the north end of the building and two on the south end, one on the east side of the building, one on the west side on both the north and south, so a total of four different balconies. I suppose if the action the commission wanted to take would be to approve the amendment with the elimination of two of the balconies, you could do that. We would have to bring back, I think probably the cleanest way to do it would be to bring back. I think. back a revised amendment to the agreement for approval at a subsequent meeting. You know, the language in the resolution that's been presented makes the final terms of the amendment subject to the approval of the city attorney, but if there's specific direction from the city commission as to what should be permitted and what shouldn't be permitted, I'd feel more comfortable bringing back a revised amendment.
Would you need a motion along those lines to make it happen?
Some kind of motion would be appropriate.
And that's to send to the planning commission or where are we sending this?
I think what were your, what it would be, would be referring the issue back to staff to revise the proposed amendment to the PUD agreement. So, I mean, I suppose if you wanted to, you could ask that this go back to the planning commission, but there is no specific provision in the zoning ordinance that would require this type of an amendment to a PUD agreement to go back through the planning commission process.
So I know it's a little bit atypical here, but before we go through that process, you know, I'd like to hear, I see the architect is here tonight and the petitioner, maybe we learn a little bit more. If the commission doesn't object to it, I'll take executive privilege here and learn a little bit more about what they want to do before we make any decisions because you have a project that's already under construction right now. From my understanding, this is a nice, small add-on to, you know, improve the property. It's not a catastrophic change to the design of it and I'd like to hear from the petitioner before we, you know, delay construction, eliminate the idea. As far as we know, this could be a really good thing in our downtown, you know, for these residences. So, you know, this isn't something that, you know, the ground hasn't broken. This is a small audible that's been called and requested. So we've done this before. We had another project on 11 Mile where they came in during construction and wanted to add some balconies and that was fine near a residential neighborhood. So I'd like to hear from the petitioners if they're willing to come up tonight and talk a little bit about it. Anyone object to that? Okay, I see Mr. Nadolsky and Mr. Clatt here.
On the other half.
Mr. Krieger.
Mr. Krieger. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Clatt Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile. And Len Nadolsky?
With LL Land, doing the project.
So, you know, I'll just give you a brief on how this all came about and Len, if you want to expand on it, please do. So as you know, we're constructing the project and initially we were approved to have balconies on the west side, okay? Once the fifth floor got put on and frankly Len walked out and said, look at these views, we can make this an even better project and improve on the penthouse units, which is what these will affect, let's, let's go for it and let's try and make this a home run, even more so than it already is. So what, we are absolutely sensitive to adding balconies on the west because of the neighbors. Our proposal is to add the balconies on the north and on the south. The area that will connect the existing pre-approved balconies on the west to the proposed balconies on the north and the south is really a walkway. It gets you to these other areas to sit at. These are high-end units. They are, these, these proposed terraces or balconies are just for those units only, so just be for those residents. There is a, like a social balcony, but it faces Main Street and it's completely enclosed by the building. So we saw this as a simple, small addition, something that does not change in essence what was previously approved because we already do have the balconies out there on the west and on the east. But what it does is it creates a stronger, better amenity for those who are going to be renting these high-end units. So that's really the essence of why we're here. We're trying to improve on it. We think we can get better rents and make it more attractive.
And one thing important to note is 144 square feet, so they're very, very small.
Use it on your own.
And it's not open to the public. And we really put them on the north and the south end. So that's a walkway through the neighborhood. In fact, if anything, it's going to be a little quieter because they won't use their balcony facing the neighbors. They'll actually go to the side balcony. It's enough to put a little round table with four people to sit was the whole idea. We saw the views and the look on top of that rooftop and just said, we've got to do something. This really, really enhances the look. These units typically rent for about $3,500 a month. So you're not going to have, just, it's going to be a class of people too, they're going to have a big wild parties. It's not the idea for it as well. We're also going to screen it a little bit. We're going to have some screening because we don't want them to come out on the roof and stuff. We want to keep them pretty contained.
Okay. Commissioner Purush?
You may have mentioned this and I missed it. How wide is that walkway portion that's along the west side?
It's about four feet.
Okay.
Each one of those little squares that you see are two feet.
And you're missing, there's a wall there too.
Correct, yeah, there's a, there's a 42-inch high, or actually 48-inch high wall as well.
That you're going to walk by.
Around the exterior.
Yes. So you, so to sit there and to actually have a view, it's a 48-inch wall. You wouldn't really want to sit there and do that. So as a walkway, you'd go to the side view, to the east and the west side of it.
Okay, thanks.
Wouldn't be much of a view unless you're standing there, where if you want to sit down and have a barbecue or something at a table, you'd go to the side decks is what that's for.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Nadolsky. Mr. Krieger? Oh, one more.
Sorry, I do have a question.
Mr. Macy?
So I'm looking at the walkways, but then on both sides, both the north and the south, it still seems that that balcony that's facing, that's technically on the north and south, it's still kind of facing that back direction, right?
Mm-hmm. And there's a four-foot wall. So the openness is going to be more toward Main Street or toward Main Street and looking out.
East and the north.
East and the north.
Correct. There's a four-foot high wall that runs all along. There's a guardrail and also a screen wall.
And that condition's no different than what we previously had approved. It's just that area is not intended to sit at, it's intended to walk by to go to the sitting area that's on the north or on the south.
Commissioner Purush?
The four balconies that face west on the west side, do they also have that four-foot wall?
They do.
They do? Okay. So this would just be a continuation of what's already there for those balconies?
Correct.
Okay.
And the units in the middle, you know, they're, I would use the term landlocked. Remember, we stepped the building in to try and reduce the massing initially. And because of the size of the lot and everything, there's only so much we can do with the building. So unfortunately, they can't benefit from this, but on the north and in the south, you know, we're hoping that we can do this to give them a better outdoor seating area.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the one facing west is the one looking over Main Street, correct?
The one, the west faces the neighborhood.
The west faces the neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay. But don't you see a problem with balconies looking right down into people's backyards?
No, it's five stories out and there's a, there's a half wall to help screen it.
Okay, so little kids wouldn't be able to, to look over it, but an adult can easily look over a four-foot wall. Most adults can easily look over a four-foot wall. And you're looking right down into people's backyards. Probably not into their house because of the angle, but you know, if there's families with swimming pools, that can't be a very favorable, you know, that can be a very unfavorable opportunity for people who shouldn't be looking into backyards with swimming pools and...
You currently have that in the blue decks already approved that are there. We're actually moving it a little more further and that's a walkway to get there.
I also count 33 balconies already facing the west. So, I mean, I think we went through this at planning, we went through it up here, we approved the project. What this is essentially doing is taking the penthouse units and saying, hey, I mean, almost to a benefit where you, the blue spaces that are up there that are already facing, you know, the neighborhood are now going to be activated on the north and south, which those face, I think, the Greek street food, cuisine.
Yeah.
And then I believe the parish to the north, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, in reality, what you're doing is, you know, I could argue that you're making it better, not that there should be issues. I mean, this is something that's, you know, right in downtown. So I don't see, I see it as a request that helps, you know, make the project better and nicer and more marketable and it takes residents and it moves it and it's not creating a new problem. I mean, there's already balconies there and, you know, we went through this analysis. So that's my thought.
I probably wasn't in favor of the balconies being there over the houses the first time through.
That's done. Commissioner Vasar?
I'm not comfortable moving forward with this without knowing that there's been some discussion with folks in the neighborhood to address their concerns. My motion's going to be to refer this back to staff to bring us an alternative proposal that would eliminate the proposed extension of the balconies on the northwest and the southwest corners of the development.
Motion by Commissioner Vasar, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gibbs, discussion. Commissioner Douglas?
I think the fact that staff put this on the consent agenda initially is telling. They're usually pretty sensitive to any major changes, putting it on the discussion agenda. I don't find these additions to be, in terms of the overall project, to be an overreach at all. I look into my neighbors' backyards all the time, so...
Careful, I'm safe.
I mean, I have a yard, they have a yard. So, I mean, I just don't see this to be a big deal in the grand scheme of things and so I will vote against the motion and should my views prevail, I will move to approve the PUD change.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Douglas. I don't think this is that substantive a change to bury it in a mountain of government bureaucracy. It seems like a very simple request to improve quality of life and the value of those units. And if, the biggest concern is, yeah, your neighbor might be able to see in your backyard, well, that goes for anyone that lives next to a two-story home. Your neighbor from their bathroom or their bedroom can see into your backyard. That's, that's what it's like to have neighbors and, and I can tell you any night when I, in summer, when I sleep and my windows open, if any of my neighbors is talking on their front porch, I can hear them like they're sitting next to me in my bedroom. That's just, that's having neighbors, right? We're not talking about putting a nightclub up there or a restaurant or something. This is so, a couple of people live in the unit can sit out there and have a cocktail or eat a little dinner on their patio. I don't think that's such a nuisance that we have to make, you know, a federal case out of it. So I'm happy to approve this because it is not a substantive change or requires us going back to the drawing board.
Commissioner Macy?
So when I, when I heard this brought forward, I was thinking that it was adding balconies to a side facing the neighborhood that didn't exist before and I didn't like that it slipped through planning and somehow it seemed like it was a little bit of a trick to add balconies where there hadn't been some facing the neighbors. But I've spent a long time trying to figure out which way this map is going and now my understanding is that there already are balconies facing this exact direction. I don't know that I'm totally convinced that the walkway is just going to divert all of the people away from that because it's still, there's still a little balcony spot there. But to me, that would be what the concern should be is the balcony spot that's already existing. And that's already there and to the extent this does anything, it maybe moves them to another spot. So I'm going to be voting against this motion in favor of the change.
Commissioner Purush?
Not to prolong this part of the discussion a lot longer, but I also like Commissioner Douglas looking into everybody else's backyard. You know, we have open fences, we don't have privacy fences, the houses are close together. We see what everybody else is doing unless they have a huge privacy fence. And in terms of being up high and looking down, the Royal Oak Manor, the Barton Towers, those have 12 stories of balconies that look right into blocks of backyards all the time. So this is nothing new, having tall buildings with the ability to look over somebody else's yard. That's been going on for 30 years. So that's just part of living in an urban area with a lot of close by neighbors, not only houses, but also multifamily residential. This is a lot more quiet a use than what has been there historically when it was an automotive dealership a long time ago or portions of that. So the fact that it's now residential as opposed to commercial is improving the noise factor right there. So, and I also don't see this as adding any additional balcony space, so to speak, into these areas. They're going to be moving to the north end or the south end of those, those balconies. They're not going to be hanging out for the mouse part on those little four-inch strips along the side, so. And plus, there's balconies already on the west side, so. Anyway, I will not be voting in favor of the motion.
Okay, anything else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, move approval of the revision to the PUD as proposed.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion with Commissioner Macy.
Just like my neighbors to know that I do not look into their backyards.
Oh, well, you do.
They're watching, just in case.
If you live on the corner, I think it's the other way around.
I'm going to put my addition on.
Oh, so now that we're all kind of weirded out by our colleagues here, keeping top behaviors, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for explaining the situation a little bit more.
Be aware.
All right. This brings us to item nine, the first non-consent agenda item. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission licensed establishments, public hearing, City Tavern, Royal Oak LLC, request to approve new plan of operation. Chief O'Donoghue?
Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request to review a plan of operation from City Tavern, Royal Oak LLC. They're requesting to transfer the ownership of the Class C and SDM liquor license currently used by Hamlin Corner and Strata. The applicants will be doing business at City Tavern located at 376 and 386 North Main. Get into that. Okay. So the applicants request to drop the space located at 366 North Main, formerly occupied by Strata. The applicants also request to cancel the two additional bar permits, catering permit and specific food permit. City Tavern, Royal Oak LLC is owned by John Mars Sr., John Mars Jr., Victor Palushai, Palushai, I believe, Ron Nichols and City Tavern Holding LLC. City Tavern Holding LLC is owned by John Mars Sr., John Mars Jr. and Victor Palushai. The applicants will spend $290,000 to purchase, purchase the assets, including the liquor license, and spend an additional $50,000 in renovations and leaseholder improvements. And the breakdown of, the financials are located, are included in the memo. They'll be taking over the current lease and will be paying that lease with, with, through sales. The applicant, City Tavern began in 2019 in the space that was formerly Mr. B's Rochester, Michigan. City Tavern concept is based on a cheer-style neighborhood establishment which serves great food with exceptional service. The applicants, John Mars Sr. and Jr. and Ron Nichols, have been in the restaurant business for over 23 years. They have owned Mr. B's Rochester in Michigan, in Rochester, Michigan for the last 23 years and the Mr. B's Roadhouse and Independence for the last 15 years. They've had a handful of MLCC violations and they're included. We spoke with law enforcement reps from both those communities and they said they're well-run establishments and have very responsive owners. Victor has been involved in several businesses, including briefly business in Royal Oak. He has held interest in Old Detroit Burger Bar in Orient Township, Clubhouse 81 in Auburn Hills, Old Detroit City Grill in Royal Oak and Mo's Pete in Flint Township. His MLCC violations are included also. And of course, we have spoken with the other law enforcement reps in those communities and they all spoke positively of Victor. In addition to the applicants, they will have three full-time managers to run day-to-day, Ron Nichol, Naomi Valley and Tim Bernard, where they have extensive experience and they will be running the day-to-day operations. If approved, they want to operate as an upscale sports-themed restaurant, offering full-service kitchen and bar. Hours of operation will be 11:00 AM till 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 AM through 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. They'll have a full-service kitchen. Kitchen will open up 30 minutes prior to close, or I'm sorry, kitchen will be open until 30 minutes prior to closing. Last service will be 20 minutes prior to closing. They have basically the same footprint as Hamlin Corner, one with one less bar seat. The applicants are requesting a dance permit. The dance permit will, which is approximately 10 by 20, and the applicants are also requesting... The dance permit will, which is approximately 10 by 20, and the applicants are also requesting an entertainment permit. They will offer occasional live music, DJs, and interaction with trivia and sports personalities. All live music will end at 1:00 a.m. The applicants will close all the windows and doors when there is live music or a DJ, and the applicants have agreed to sign and strictly adhere to the city's entertainment and dance permits. The applicants are employing an experienced management team, including one of the applicants who will actually oversee day-to-day operations. Our findings indicate the applicants meet the necessary requirements of the police department, and we do not oppose this request. If approved, however, the applicants will have to comply with all planning, zoning, and building requirements and restrictions.
Questions for the chief. Commissioner Dubb?
Chief, are you aware of any interaction discussions that have taken place between the applicant and the residents of the building above?
Yes. The applicants have made contact with the rep from the condo association, and it's my understanding that they don't oppose this change.
All right.
That is true.
Okay.
Any other?
All right, good enough. Thank you.
Well, if there are other questions for the chief, do the petitioners want to see Ms. Allen here representing? Tell us a little bit more about the concept and open themselves up for questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Commission. I'm Kelly Allen. On behalf of the applicants tonight, I want to introduce you to the team here. You're going to get to know them. John Mars Jr., you stand up for us. Okay. And Ron Nichol, he's also a member, and this is Noemi. She's going to be managing, and this is Tim Bednerd. He's going to be managing as well.
They're all partners.
All three partners, okay. So you guys can have a seat. And as usual, Lieutenant and the chief have done a great job on this write-up. Everything is correct. I do want to make a point that the folks from the condo association are here, and John reached out to them and met with them and talked about what they want to do there and who they are. It's really something. They have been in Rochester for 23 years. So, I mean, my kids were in, you know, diapers in that place, and they have almost a perfect record. They have one substantive violation in 23 years in Rochester. And I think it's also very illustrative that, you know, the chief and Lieutenant Spencer reached out to all of law enforcement and all of the places where Victor and the Mars family have operated, and really no problems at all. So the Strata space is going away. This will take over. This will be the City Tavern, Royal Oak, and I'm sure that you will find it to be a very exciting new concept in the downtown.
Questions for Ms. Allen or the petitioners? Commissioner Douglas?
Ms. Allen, when you say the Strata place is going away...
They're not taking the Strata space. The Strata space is, there's a for lease sign in that additional area that the Hamlin Corner had taken on and concepted as Strata. So they're only taking the primary Hamlin Corner space.
Okay, good, thanks.
Going away in terms of this applicant.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, well, what I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing. Same rules apply that we had in public comment. Please come to the podium once recognized by me. You got three minutes, and there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Anyone wish to speak tonight? Go with Mr. Halli.
Good evening again. I wish City Tavern a lot of success. I live right directly across the street, and I have to tell you, in case you didn't know it, Hamlin Corner was the most miserable neighbor anybody has ever seen. They played music, live music and DJ till 2:00 in the morning many days a week with their windows and doors always wide open, and Mr. Craig would never even respond to neighborhood complaints, let alone do anything about it. And they had exactly the same rules, and they never, ever shut them down or complained or made them close their windows or made them stop at 1:00 like they were required to. I really hope the City Tavern will actually follow the rules. I'm not sure how much I'm going to hear anymore because I now have a five-story building in front of me, but I assure you, there's going to be, oh, 70 tenants, they're going to be really angry if they continue to do that because they're going to be right on top of it, and that's going to echo right through their places in a major way. So I'm hoping City Tavern will behave themselves, and if not, I hope the city building department actually will do their job and respond to them when they complain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halli.
Please.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Or at the hearing? Mr. Kelzer?
So to your comment, Ken Kelzer, I'm in the, in the building right there and lived through the nightmare of the Hamlin Corner, so it was right below us, and I actually got involved with it, and Peter Ulrich is our HOA president that's here, and actually had to get involved with the city and the police and started showing the videos and going through there, and in fact, I think you guys have responded and have kind of turned this thing around. Now, I've had the opportunity to meet with the team, went down there, chatted with John, actually invited us down to see what was going to happen down there. Actually brought another board member of, from our HOA that had spent time in the restaurant business and went through the whole litany of what is, what are you talking about? Is it bottle service? What are you going to do to avoid exactly what you were saying because it was a complete nightmare? And my take on it is, these guys really do seem responsible. We've done our own background checks on them ourselves and where they've been in business and did our own little, you know, social background type thing and kind of attest to what you're saying, that I think these guys are pretty good, upstanding citizens. Their business model that they've had in all of the other places has exactly what they've been operating to, this Cheers environment. The answer to the Strata thing was one of my deepest concerns because when that was opened up, that's when this whole thing turned out to be a nightmare. And Strata, to my understanding, the way it's going to get constructed now, can't even get a liquor license because it was attached to Hamlin to begin with, so it's going to be a standalone place. These guys have walled it off. They were not interested in doing a nightclub. They were interested in doing a Cheers, a place that we think the building would support to go down. And so we're looking to be a neighbor and bridge that type of a community. The other thing that I like to hear is, in the places that they also have, they are community members. They buy T-shirts, they get the softball, the Little League, they have, you know, breast cancer awareness, turkey trots, that kind of thing. That's the kind of neighbor that we were looking for, so I can't guarantee everything, just like you said, but it sure sounds a heck of a lot better than what we had with Hamlin where we got zero response. So that would just be the input I have.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kelzer. Anybody else wish to speak tonight at tonight's public hearing? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the discussion to this side of the table. Any additional questions for the chief or the petitioners? Commissioner Levaser?
Chief, you heard the complaints about Hamlin and I want to get your perspective whether that there was an enforcement issue or whether they were acting within the scope of what they're allowed to do, but there was no action we could take, or if there's some other explanation.
Yes, I will tell you, the, there was a mention of code enforcement. It's the police department's responsibility, and we were responsive. When Hamlin first opened up, there was some growing pains that we worked through, and that's why they're required to keep their doors. I think they're the only business that has that requirement in their plan of operation to keep their, their things all shut. We did make sure they did that. We also, you know, especially lately, there was a change when they got Strata, and then lately we had a couple of high-profile incidents, and we were, I think we're here today because of the response we had with them and what we tolerate. We require everyone to sign an entertainment agreement and dance permit, and they've had businesses all over, and I'm guessing they've never signed anything like that before. And that gives us a lot of authority. At Hamlin, we pulled their dance permit, and that helped us get to where we are today, where maybe we've got a more responsive operator. But, you know, our, our, our job when we come in, we try to work with new business owners to get them to understand that we're serious when we say a plan of operation, we're holding you to it, but there's a point where it goes too far, and then we'll do the things we need to do to, to address it.
If we find that there's problems for the residents above, what steps should they take? What steps can we take?
Well, it depends on what the problem is. There's some, like, you have to, if they have loud music and their windows are open and it's past 1:00, they should call the police and say they're not allowed to do that, and want someone to go by and check it out. Our problem is, when we go by there, they have to actually be in violation, and a lot of times they're not. If there's a vehicle in front of their business with loud music and it's not actually their business, that's not really on them. If they can't manage their crowds coming and going, and that becomes an issue, we'll try to work with them. So my suggestion would be is if there's an issue, call the police, explain what the issue is, we'll go look at it, and everything, every time we do that, it's very well documented, and in the next month, you'll see the annual report with all these documentation of all these calls we get. But if they don't call us, a lot of times, we don't know there's a problem.
Any other questions? Commissioner Dubb?
Is it possible to hear from the petitioner about the...
Noise, sound?
No, just the overall, I'm having flashbacks to when we first approved Hamlin Corner, and we kind of knew the brand, right? Because Hamlin Corners are random. There's a contingent in our city that's always like, ah, it's a, everything's a Trojan horse for a nightclub, right? And 99 out of 100 times, it has not been. But in this case, in Hamlin Corner, it was. It like quickly became a nightclub, much to the dismay of the people in the building and the surrounding neighborhood. So I see here, you know, DJ and live music, and I'm very much pro-live music. I think that's very cool. I just want to, we, Hamlin, when Hamlin came in, it was very much the same context. High-end sports bar, sports bar is kind of what we do. I'm just wondering, where does DJ fit into that model and live music fit into that model?
I think that's a fair question to ask before we vote on approval.
No, you're right. I'm not wrong with nightclub. I got nothing wrong with that, is I want to, I want to understand exactly what we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, thanks for having us tonight, and definitely want to address that on behalf of my partners. I'm Ron Nichol, and I currently operate the Mr. B's Roadhouse in Clarkston, and we have no interest whatsoever in having any type of nightclub atmosphere. We used to have live entertainment in Clarkston, and actually, it got to a point where it was kind of snowballing as far as the crowd was getting a little rowdy out there and a little out of control. We changed our security, and we started pointing out people like they've had problems in the past, let them know they're not welcome in our establishment. One by one, you know, in a matter of a month, we cleaned up the place, got rid of, you know, any of the crowd that had created a problem, and brought the level back down to a nice, comfortable live entertainment. People can relax, have a drink. It was starting to turn in to the nightclub. We turned it away from that because that's not what we wanted. Currently, our model out there is like 70% food, 30% alcohol. That's comfortable. That's where we're at, and, you know, we don't, we definitely don't want to upset any of the neighbors around us, above us. We want to be a part of the community for a long time, and the last thing we are going to do is come in here and sell you something that we're not. It is who we are, and we're going to be a nice, friendly place that's going to serve great food and some good drinks and comfortable, relaxing atmosphere for everybody in the community and all our neighbors, you folks. I mean, we, we're going to keep it very low-key there and just going to have a good time where everybody can relax. I mean, so no interest at all in a nightclub.
So again, how often, how frequent is it, would you say, that you have, the sound that you have on is a game that's being viewed?
In Clarkston?
Yeah, or would your intention be here or in your other establishment?
Well, generally, right now, if it's, you know, a Michigan, Michigan State game, we'll put the sound on. Unless it's, it's not a big game, you know, Lions games, we put the sound on because that's what the people want, and we don't put the sound on for every single game. It just depends, you know, on the event. If it's a big game, we'll put the sound on for that. Otherwise, have some music going in the background and, you know, have the sport sun.
I don't think I'm picking at you. It's really just our experience with this place, and I'm not even picking on nightclubs. There's a place for that, just probably underneath a residential.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I had no idea there was so much history at that location, but over the last couple months, I've definitely heard some stories, and they sound like nightmares more than the stories, actually. So, yeah, we want no part of that at all.
Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, well, if there's no other questions, someone's willing to make a motion, the body can entertain it. Commissioner Bruce?
I'll move approval of this.
A motion by Commissioner Bruce, second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion. Oh, Commissioner Bruce?
We have a daughter and son-in-law that live out in the Rochester area, and we know that you are sponsors of a number of the locals, little sports teams and so on, so we know you're good community partners in the communication, in the communities where you work. So to me, that's a big selling point, that you're willing to actually commit to the community and donate the time and effort to do that kind of stuff. So on that basis, as well as the good operations that you've had in your other establishments, I'm, I'm very happy that you're coming into this location.
I'll just add, it seems that your business model over the past number of years doesn't really relate itself to some of the issues maybe that resulted from the previous tenant. So I think your history, your experience, what you're trying to do will fit well. In the event that it doesn't, we have some safeguards with the volunteer dance permit and entertainment permit contracts that you've signed into, so, you know. And I also believe that we have one of the, you know, best police departments in the state, and, you know, our first objective is to always, you know, resolve issues and work with operators and work with neighbors. So if anything does pop up unique that is unanticipated, I'm confident that you're going to get, you know, the full support of everyone involved to resolve it. And so I think we have some stopgaps, and we have some operators that have a good reputation and a good model, so I have no problem supporting this motion. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. When's, uh, open time, start date? March 1st. Oh, wow.
Come watch the tournament.
That's, yeah, yeah, it's an important date to meet.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are welcome.
Have it forward to it.
March 1st.
It's like three weeks.
All right. Hamlin was just like the one time. Everyone to clear out?
Everything's tied to that. Turned into that.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to item number 10, the Commission for the Arts Annual Report. Mr. Giddinger is here. Mr. Crizon?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Tonight, we are here to present the annual report as required by the Commission for the Arts ordinance. So I'm just going to quickly go through a couple of the highlights for the last year. Number one, participation in the programming continues to grow. And when I mean participation, I'm talking about the sponsors, volunteers, the artists who are involved. Each year, we keep seeing a growth with that. The programs themselves, the Summer Concert Series this year, I think, was the best we've ever had. Constant crowds on Center Street. The Art Explored continues to do well, bring in high-quality art. Public Piano Project has become a staple of summer in downtown Royal Oak. This year, we also put together the first Artist Laureate Program in which we selected two artists to serve as the co-artist laureate, and they're currently working on their public art project. So with that, I have with me Chair of the Commission for the Arts, Jason Giddinger, who will give you a little bit more.
Mr. Giddinger.
How's it going, everybody? Jason Giddinger. We have a fantastic group of people that get together every month and talk about things and then go off and do wonderful projects for our city, and we have great leadership from you guys and James, and I would like to publicly recognize that, how great he's been for us over these last number of years with us. Every year, things get better. We have more and more interesting things. I'm not exactly sure where that public art project by our artist laureates ends up, but I think we've talked about it, hopefully ending up maybe in our new facilities over here at City Hall. So wonderful support. I'd love to answer any questions anybody has about the arts and things we've done this year and take any of your comments.
Questions? Commissioner Dubb?
I mean, I guess my first comment would be like, this, you know, was born, what, five, six years ago? We passed the ordinance six years ago?
I mean, like, it may be seven or eight at this point.
That was one of the first things we did after, after we were first elected in '11. It was in the first year or two. And the evolution of it and the product and the impact that we're seeing on the community is awesome, and you've been at the helm. I want to recognize you, Jason, for that, and James, for all the awesome work you've done. But can we just highlight a couple of things, like the growth of the piano project, which came out of your mind, and is volunteer-driven, and let's just highlight that, and what, not just the aesthetic that it brings to the city and the coolness, but the community involvement around making it happen.
If I should note, I mean, for, for neighbors that are polite, like, we've helped a number like, we've helped a number of other communities now do similar things. There's a piano in Birmingham now. We consulted with Ferndale about a piano. Like, it's not a new idea. We definitely took that idea from other communities around the world. But it was...it was new for our city to even broach that topic. Prior to the Commission for the Arts existing, we would have to stand here for hours on a Monday to...for you guys to debate a piece of artwork in front of a...in front of a business on a sidewalk. We now have a process for that that allows for arts to be a part of our community without it tying up you guys' resources, which only goes to...as long as there's rules for how it operates, it makes wonderful things happen almost on their own. There's...I mean, every other month, there's somebody coming with a mural project. I mean, we...I don't even think we put that in the thing. But if somebody's painting a mural on the side of a building, it comes in front of us, and then it comes onto your consent agenda, just to make sure that it conforms to the rules that we wrote. Those things didn't exist eight years ago. So it is great to watch all of that happen. Most of the projects that I've gotten off the ground personally for the commission have just been to demonstrate, "Hey, guys, we can do this." The first year we did the public piano thing, I did one piano, and it was in front of our building. And I was like, "It'll work." And everybody was like, "I don't know. What if people destroy it?" "We'll get another one," or "We'll fix it," or whatever. And we've had...we've had a great...a great number of years with the pianos now. And it is something I hear about all the time. Even I've had a lot of meetings in Detroit recently, and they're like, "Oh, the Hollywood Holiday Market, that's where the piano's at," right? Like, there's a bunch of those kinds of comments. So it is fantastic to see all that stuff happen. I do hope that more people come up with ideas and bring more things to the table. A lot of times, they think that there's a big pot of money sitting around for those things, and that's not the true nature of this organization. It's to encourage and support. Sometimes, that's with money. But more often than not, it's just the connections to make sure that somebody could get their project to happen. There's talk at the moment of a sculpture park at some point, which would be a significant undertaking and a change to a big piece of real estate in our town, which would be amazing. So all kinds of fun stuff that would never have existed had we not created this Commission for the Arts a number of years ago. So that's kudos to the commission for making those things happen. As we look to the future, we are in a situation of transition in leadership in this community. And I hope that you guys remain steadfast in your support of this body. And from a staffing perspective and from a resource perspective, as we transition to a new city manager later in your agenda this evening when you discuss those things, I hope you keep the Commission for the Arts in mind and all the wonderful things that it's brought to the community. I mean, there's scarves across the street, if you need a scarf, at the library that a bunch of knitters make, which is pretty amazing. We wouldn't be able to make those connections and those things happen if not for support from the commission and our staff. So...
It's a beautiful project. One other thing I wanted to ask was, you know, given, you know, the growth of the commission and its influence and the things it's bringing to the community and the Art Explored project downtown, where we have artists from around the region proposing installations for us, do you feel like our...the draw is growing for artists in the region? Like, is it bringing value to those artists? Are artists talking to artists about the value of having their work on display in Royal Oak?
So the discussions at the moment in terms of sculpture is...and I always knew this to be the case. You just get started, and then we get to a better place later. Sometimes, artists or anybody with an opinion about the quality of something stress the quality of something when we're starting. Let me say that. How do I say that? It's one thing to be a fan of art. It's another thing to just get started. So the first year we did the Public Piano Project, people were like, "What should we paint on the pianos?" I'm like, "I have no idea." Like, here's a bunch of paint. I got a bunch of paint and a bunch of people, and we had some pretty awesome-looking pianos. As we continue, they get better and better because now it's like, "Oh, hey, why don't you paint this one? And hey, why don't you paint that one?" And, you know, it starts to get better over time. So similarly, in terms of our sculpture, years ago, and Stuart Meek was here before James, I had somebody yell at me at a summer concert about the sculpture in our city. And he was somebody who lived on a street in town. And he was...he told me he was a sculptor, and he has works in the Louvre in Paris and all over the world. And he creates works for communities all over the planet, and that we have the worst sculptures on the planet in our program. And I said, "Well, that's wonderful. It sounds like you should come to our meetings and help us get some better sculptures." But at the same time, he's never come to a meeting. So this is not about art...one art is better than another. It's about encouraging our entire community to step up their game and be a part of the arts. And that can be a kid with a little scrap of paper and a pencil, and he writes...he draws something, and it becomes something on a wall at the Celebration of the Arts that we do in the spring, which got a sponsor today, which is awesome, thanks to Ideation. Wonderful. They're going to donate some yard signs. Or it can be a sculptor that's world-renowned. So in terms of the project I was just referencing, some people researching... we're researching the ability to create a sculpture park in our community with world-renowned sculptors. It'll take significantly more resources than we have, but it's the type of thing that people will come to support if we should find them. So we're at that level of people in our community that really want to do some interesting things. So it's always...my first question is, "Oh, that's awesome. What do we need? Oh, a quarter million dollars." I don't know where that's going to come from, but if you make a plan, maybe we could get there. So it might take 10 years, but it just gets...we have to get started. So I'm happy to see eight years of us starting. I don't think, in my lifetime, we'll ever be done. And I don't think any of you think we're ever done with the city either. But alls we can do is start the process, and then 10 years from now, we'll be even in a better place. So...
Well, thank you both for your leadership and for all the cool things you've done so far and the many things I'm sure you're going to do is to continue to move this forward.
It...I love...I love that sentiment. There's hundreds of people on...in this report that have made the arts a significant part of our community tonight. Even that last petitioner is going to put arts in their establishment in terms of live music, which I think is a wonderful thing. So it's all of us as a community that are committed to this. We just get to be here and put it in pictures and hand it to you. So even our Commissioner Representative Pat is amazing, and you were great when you were there, too. So it wouldn't happen without all of us. So thank you, guys, for that.
Mr. Perusch?
A couple of things. First of all, I also would like to thank Jason for his leadership on this commission for the years that I've been representative to it. He's an extraordinary musician and...but is open to all different kinds of explorations in different art medium. And he's a tremendous asset to this community and to this organization. I also want to thank James because he is not only an administrator here in the city, but as the administrative representative to the Commission for the Arts. He is out there working with projects beyond the normal workday, just because that's the nature of the projects. When the pianos have to be moved in the summer downtown and then moved back into the warehouse when it gets cold, James is out there helping move them. When we're setting up and handling the Celebration of the Arts, which is usually the first Saturday in June, James is there. That's a Saturday completely occupied by all kinds of art activities, and he gives himself. The pop-up parks on Center Street with the concerts, James is there. Those are after-hours. And he has fully embraced all of the crazy ideas that the Commission for the Arts has come up with and has helped many, many, many of them come to fruition. So we can't say enough about the good things that James has contributed to this commission. And I think the commission really, really appreciates the work that you've done over the years. We will...we will never forget it. The other thing I want to mention is that when Jason was talking about the number of volunteers that you see in the program, those are the actual volunteers that have contributed to one or more aspects of summer art program. My name is on the list because I crochet hats, and they end up on that pole out by the library. But that's all I can do artistically, is that. But others contribute not only their own artistic efforts, and they're brilliant at it, but because they are connected to other artists in the community, not only in Royal Oak, but in this region, we have been able to pull in all kinds of other resources to facilitate the programs that we have here in the community. We have an incredibly talented group of people who are very, very, very well-connected with the artistic community. And that has been a tremendous help to be able to broaden what we do beyond just, you know, the little things that we can do as individuals. So I agree with Jason. This has been a banner year in terms of the number of volunteers that have volunteered, the number of projects that we've undertaken and successfully accomplished. We have a lot of ideas on the drawing board. For example, the Sculpture Park idea, which is just in the percolating stages right now. But it's really an exciting group to be involved with. I think the community should be very proud of the work that the commission as a whole has done over the years because it's added a lot of value to the culture within the community for very low cost. I mean, we do most of these things by the seat of our pants without a whole lot of money. So it's really a great organization. And thank you both for everything that you've contributed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, Jason and James, you guys do a fantastic job. And you mentioned a little bit, Jason, about process procedure policies. But I was so glad that you really summed it up with people, literally hundreds of people. This is really a good program, which is just a small framework for the catalyst of individuals that, you know, come together in the spirit of making our community better. And through your stewardship, this is possible. And we just look forward to more and more creative ideas and more and more experiences that we get to add to the quality of our life here in Royal Oak. So very grateful for you and to everybody that partakes in the programs and helps contribute. It's really remarkable. So thank you.
Commissioner Dubak?
Same. Much appreciation for you guys and everyone that serves on the commission and for all the volunteers and artists. I will move to accept this.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
Thank you for sticking around tonight. Just kidding. All right. This brings us to item number 11, which is the approval of a license agreement, 2209 Vincetta Boulevard. See, Ms. Donahue and Mr. Callahan back there. Mr. Callahan, where's yours?
Yes, this is one that I wrote. During the course of permits that were pulled for the house construction at this address on Vincetta, we observed that extensive landscaping had been installed in the public right-of-way of Murdoch and Lloyd adjacent to this property. The landscaping includes over 60 trees of significant size, which were planted without the city's consent on the right-of-way. The property owner asked that the landscaping be allowed to remain in the right-of-way. We worked with the property owner to see if there was a possibility of him removing his trees and planting them on his private property as opposed to in the right-of-way. And he did not want to follow that route. He asked for a license agreement. Like most license agreements, staff recommends not approving this license agreement. It's not something that is beneficial to the city of Royal Oak. It could cause us significant costs later on if we ever were to put utilities or a sidewalk here. And just the cost of maintaining these trees that now become ours because they're on city right-of-way can be significant. The license agreement that we did develop with the property owner makes the property owner responsible for all these trees, the cost of maintaining them, removing them if they come in ill health, removing them if we ever decide we have to have a public utility or sidewalk or anything else in the public right-of-way there adjacent to its property. We've developed two sets of resolutions here. The first one is a set of resolutions to deny the request is the first set of resolutions. However, if you wanted to grant the license agreement, the last resolution is listed there on the page. The property owner was notified that he could come forward tonight. He's...I see him back there. I didn't see him earlier, but he's in the back. If you wanted to ask him any questions, but it's up to you to decide what you'd like to do with this. We think that, at least staff's opinion is, if we allow people to start landscaping the right-of-way in a manner that the city doesn't approve and doesn't authorize in advance, we could get other people doing exactly the same thing and going through similar issues of granting permission after the fact and making our right-of-ways less usable to the public.
Questions for Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan? Oh, well, hold on. One question. The property we're looking at, I don't know if you can see her on my screen. It's not surrounded by water, but this is what we're talking about. It's an island.
Yes. It's bounded by public streets on three sides. There are no other properties within that triangular-shaped lot.
It's probably one of the more unique properties in the city, I would imagine.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Commissioner Levaser?
Do we know how long these trees and plantings have been at this location?
Not that long. Over the course of the last three years, they've been planted, is what I'm going to guess. A lot of them were planted, although just in the last year.
Have we noted any specific problems between current use or current situation because of these plantings?
Not the way that it is now. But like I said, you know, so we never know what we're going to need to do on the city property in those locations.
Mr. Macy?
They all, 60, need to go, or some of them are not? So I get that they're all in the right-of-way, but it sounds like some of them are blocking sidewalks, but maybe some are potential sidewalks, and some are not. Is that...
That's correct. Some of them are...there's the combination of deciduous trees and evergreen-type trees, conifers. And we typically don't allow those types of trees to be planted in the right-of-way. They have shallow root systems. They can lift the roads and sidewalks. If sidewalks are nearby, they just are not conducive to something that we allow in the right-of-way. So if you ever see a pine tree or something in the right-of-way was not authorized by the city. And we don't necessarily go out and police the right-of-way to determine if there's a tree somebody planted that's not approved. However, in this situation, this property did have right-of-way permits in order to construct a house. And during the course of that time, we do our final inspections, and we see something has obviously changed.
The...I mean, we went through all of the properties. While a future commission could, you know, decide to put a sidewalk there, I mean, at least a couple of times I've been up here when we've gone through it, we've elected not to put or install sidewalks here on this property.
That's correct.
So...but down the road, if a future commission decided to do it, then, you know, those trees would have to be removed, et cetera. But right now, I mean, we've already elected consciously that we didn't believe on an island. I mean, there's one sidewalk that goes down Vincetta to connect Vincetta. But on Murdoch and Lloyd, there are no sidewalks. But we kind of, just to reiterate, this was not off the radar. This was something that we looked at and decided as a commission not to put a sidewalk there at some point.
Yeah, back in 2015 or so, 2014, 15.
Okay. Commissioner Macy?
That decision, you...seems like you remember it, was made because there's no need for a sidewalk in this strange island? Is that why?
I remember more that we went through every single place in the city over six years. And we determined at, you know, I mean, it was almost every month, like, okay, we went through, staff would identify where we should put sidewalks, where we shouldn't. We would decide yes or no. We went on field trips, drove around. And while I don't remember those properties specifically, I do remember that we went through in all properties. And, you know, we sectioned off the city, I think, in six blocks or six different groups.
Yes.
And just every year, we'd hit up one group.
Okay. I mean, I'm not doubting the process, but it just seemed like there were a few exceptions. And I'm wondering if anyone remembered why this was one.
I think...yeah, I think I do. It's a weird...it's a big plot, but it's, as someone pointed out, it's triangular-shaped. And there...I mean, I think at the time, we said that, you know, if something ever gets built there, that may affect our decision to include sidewalks. But when there was nothing on that piece of property, there was no reason for people to be walking on it, I think, was the logic.
So this house is...this house, there was no house there?
There's...no, never a house there.
No.
Okay.
Or none, in recent memory.
There was a house there for a long time, and it was eventually demolished. It was vacant for a while, was demolished. The property was vacant for quite a while. I don't know how many years it was vacant, but then it was obviously approved for development by the Farhat family. I have a problem with allowing these trees to continue. It would mean taking down living trees, and that's something that is...that's a really, really, really hard decision. But we have a real experienced builder here who knows the rules and who understood, I'm sure, that this is public right-of-way, and that he was planting in public right-of-way. And it violated his right-of-way permit that he had. The right-of-way permit that he had did not allow him to plant landscaping in the city right-of-way. And I...granted a license agreement as it's drafted provides that he has a lot of obligations to maintain the trees... to maintain the trees and to get them out of the way if we ever decide to put in a sidewalk and so on and so forth. He has to maintain liability insurance. But I think it's a really bad, bad precedent to say, to set, to say, okay, you seriously violated our rules and we're going to let you get away with it by just signing a license agreement. I have difficulty with that, and so I'm not going to be voting to approve the license agreement if it comes to a vote.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I struggle with how we landed in this situation, because I agree, the petition is probably well aware of the right-of-way rules, but also aware of our affinity for trees. I don't want to grant a pass where people can essentially annex public land by planting trees there and then preventing the public from using that public right-of-way. So, I mean, we're kind of in a tight spot, but I am curious to hear a little bit more about how we ended up here. What was the purpose of planning the trees, knowingly planning the trees in right-of-way that belongs to the public, knowing that this is where it would end up?
I'll, if the commission doesn't object, I'll take chair privilege, and if Mr. Farhat is willing to come to the podium, I'll invite him to do so and kind of explain the situation from his perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. John Farhat, 2209 Vincetta. I apologize that I'm pretty unprepared tonight, because until Mr. Callahan just told me that he was suggesting a denial of this request, I was under the impression that he was going to suggest that the commission supported this. So I am a little confused, but I'm going to do the best that I can to try to explain and answer some of the questions that you guys have asked. Over the last few months, my attorney, along with the city attorney, have been drafting a license agreement. The entire time, we've been going back and forth about language, responsibilities, duties. We finally came to a final draft. It was signed off by me, sent into the city, and I was told that the approval will come from the commission tonight. So I fully came here thinking I had full support of the engineering department, so I apologize that I'm a little less prepared than I should be. To answer a few of the questions, I purchased the property in 2012, and the property was torn down right after. I think, if I recall correctly, about 10 of the trees were planted in 2012, and the remainder of the trees were planted in 2016 or 2017. I know for a fact that none have been planted within the last few years. It wasn't until I pulled a permit for the construction of our new home about 18 months ago that I was even aware that there was an issue with the city. I am a licensed builder in the city of Royal Oak, and I have built many properties. I have not built any property on a lot as unique as this. Before anything was done, I came to the engineering department and inquired if there were any sidewalks that were ever going to go in on the Lloyd and Murdoch side of the property. I don't have the drawing in front of me, but I would assume you do, okay? So I checked with the engineering department to see if there were any plans to install sidewalks along those two stretches. And at that current time, there was a replacement program that was currently going through the neighborhood, that exact neighborhood that I live in, and they elected to not put them in. I then went and asked, are there any future plans? And was told that I cannot be guaranteed that there will be no sidewalks ever put in, but at this moment, there is no immediate need, because there's a sidewalk that runs along Lloyd, along Murdoch, and for anyone to even get to a sidewalk that could be along the two sides of Vincetta, they would be inadvertently crossing the street to then have to cross another street to get right back to where it is, because there is no other property in that space. The trees were planted because, if you notice, the property is an island, and there are houses that face it from all directions, kind of what I would call like a fishbowl. And what my wife and I decided was that we did not want to have a privacy fence. We kind of felt it would look like a prison yard, and it's a very iconic street and lot. So we chose to use some natural screening. We both grew up in Royal Oak and know that the neighbors in the city is very keen on trees. I believe, and again, I'm sorry that I'm not prepared, I believe there are closer to 80 trees, not 60. There's a variety of evergreen, multi-stem, single stem. It is my understanding that the ones that are of issue are the evergreen and the multi-stem. I believe the single stem are okay, but Mr. Callahan would have to address that, because I'm not 100% sure. The reason they were put in is because I'm aware that between the sidewalk and the street, the reason that no multi-stem or evergreen can be installed is because there is a vision issue. If somebody is coming down a sidewalk, somebody's backing out of a driveway, it can cause issues with sight. Because I was told no sidewalks are ever going to be installed on those two spaces, nor does the driveway that we have coming out to Vincetta go out that way. There's no gate access, there's no drive or sidewalks to enter those two sides. I probably made an assumption, which was a mistake, and I realize that now. But what I was told by the engineering department, when I tried to close up my right-of-way permit a few months ago, was that my two options were either to have a licensing agreement with the city that says that I'll be responsible for removing the trees if they decide to put a sidewalk in the future, which I have signed, or remove the trees. I think, I understand some of the objections of the people up here are concerns that I should have known better. And if I have to remove the trees to get my right-of-way permit closed, I will do so, but I would just ask that the commission drive by the property or view the property and look at what's there and ask themselves, as removing all of those trees, what's best for the neighborhood? You know, I don't know how these decisions are made or what things are taken into account, but there was no malicious intent, there was no, I'm going to try to pull something over. Obviously, I knew that at some point in time, I was going to build a house on this residence, and the city would be involved, so it wasn't like something could be hidden or whatnot. So that's to the extent that I can explain the best that I can. Again, I apologize for not being prepared. I was completely under the impression that I had the support of the engineering department when I walked in the door today.
Mr., Commissioner Levaser?
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move that we adopt the second resolution, which approves the proposed license agreement as drafted.
A motion by Commissioner Levaser, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hear from the city attorney on the subject of setting a precedent here. I mean, the applicant's request is, you know, sensible, but, I mean, what risk do we face that if we just grant the right-of-way permit here, that everybody else is going to come to us with the same request and we will not have a legal leg to stand on?
Mr. Douglas, the devil would be in the detail. If you move forward and approve this particular license agreement, you're approving this agreement with the attachment and the plan that's laid out for this particular piece of property. So from a strictly legal standpoint, you're not in any way obligated to approve the next license agreement request that comes down the road. Having said that, if you choose to deny the next one, the important thing is going to be drawing distinctions between this one and that one, as to why you're denying that one when this one was approved, and so on, and so on, and so on. I mean, I think, in addition to the idea of setting precedent to having, to having to approve just generally this kind of a license agreement, I can't speak for Mr. Callahan, but my sense in talking with him over the months that we've been trying to hammer out the details of the license agreement, I think he's been just as concerned about the precedent of basically allowing someone to come in and ask for forgiveness instead of asking for permission in the first place.
Commissioner Perush?
Unless I'm understanding the layout of the property, and I'm looking over at the city attorney's diagram, site plan of the, it would have been just as easy to create the screening that you want to create inside the property line, just moving it right inside the property line. It's not like we're talking about a 50-foot right-of-way here. We're talking about a typical right-of-way that is around the streets. And I think if you wanted to be in compliance with the rules and not install them on the right-of-way and still had that screening, you could have just moved them just a few feet into the interior of the property, and you would have been okay. And unfortunately, that didn't happen.
I'll just add that, you know, it's an interesting point as well, because I think, you know, these trees weren't cheap to plant, right? And I think if one had the intention of, you know, misleading the city or purposefully asking for forgiveness later, they wouldn't make a $20,000, $30,000 mistake like that. $60,000. So I don't think that, you know, to me, I, well, there's good argument about precedent, there's good argument about, you know, managing one-off agreements. I think that the intention, you know, to me, I mean, unless, you know, people just have a lot of money to throw around, I don't see someone spending $60,000 at the chance. I could see planting one or two trees and trying to mark their spot or prevent a sidewalk down the road. We saw that on, you know, Sunnybrook, but I don't think that you would see that, you know, in this particular situation where, you know, a $60,000 investment was made. Whether it was the right decision or not, or whether it complied or not, is a whole different question, or whether someone was, you know, ignorant, I don't think it was, you know, malfeasance here. Commissioner Levaser?
I do see this as kind of an unusual situation, unusual property, so I'm a little bit less concerned with the precedent. Certainly, we don't want people simply, as you say, seeking forgiveness as opposed to permission, but we do have unusual circumstances here, so I'd be inclined to make that exception. I do think also that these trees enhance the quality of the neighborhood, and so that plays into it as well.
Commissioner Dubb?
I mean, I just feel like we're in a really tight spot here, because, I mean, this is not a private property rights issue, right? This is basically the private claiming of public space that is intended for public use. Whether it was a mistake or intentional, that's still the issue that's before us. It's a unique plot of land, I recognize that. But is the alternative to the license agreement is that we order the trees be taken out?
Probably not all of them, but some of them.
I feel like, well, then we're going to reap the whirlwind for that. Or we grant, which, you know, which, that's what frustrates me about this, like, I don't want to send the signal, like, plant a tree on public property and we'll give it to you. So that's, I'm struggling with this. I don't like the concept of whether it was intentional or an accident, that if you plant a tree on public property, the city will then, you've got the city pinned against the wall, and they're just going to license the property to you. But it is a weird property, I'll grant that.
Mr. Macy?
It's also, it's not that the city doesn't want trees on our right-of-way in any way. Like, if their, if permission had been sought, feels like we could, some of those trees could have been placed, or some other types of trees could have been placed in approximately that same area on the right-of-way, but perhaps not exactly where they were. And I don't, I agree, I don't know if it was intentional or not. I do think that history as a builder in the city makes it more likely that he did know the rules. But regardless, I think we have the rules, and I'm not inclined to allow something that we, just because we have a weakness for trees, allow people to break the rules for that reason.
Mr. Douglas?
So when someone comes to the city and wants to plant a tree in the right-of-way, how does that, I'm not phrasing my question well, how does that process transpire? And are there circumstances here or elsewhere where somebody could have, you know, planted trees in the right-of-way that we find acceptable? Is the problem the selection of materials? Are there specimens here that we would allow and in fact welcome in the right-of-way?
Yes, more than likely. So we have issues with the placement. They've basically blocked off all 15 feet of the grass area with randomly spaced trees, not at a set spacing that gives most of the trees the adequate room to grow and mature properly. So eventually, some of these trees are going to be crowded out by other trees that are probably stronger and healthier, and some of them will have to be removed, or they'll suffer. The root systems will intermingle and probably compete with each other for water. So we have some rules about how close we space trees together on the city right-of-way, especially ones that we're going to be taking care of. So we have some issue with the spacing and the location, and of course, the type of trees. We typically don't like conifers, pine trees in the right-of-way because of the things that the root systems can do for adjacent pavements. If somebody wanted to plant trees, if this property owner came to us and said, I really want to plant some trees around my property, we would have worked to find places for his trees at a spacing that was agreeable to the city, and we would have accepted those trees once they were planted as ours and taking care of them in the future. We can work with anybody to get trees planted in the right-of-way. The DPS plants trees for property owners who want a tree planted in the right-of-way. I understand the price went up this year, but the city does all the work to plant that tree in the right-of-way, and all you have to do is pay them upfront, and they go and order the tree from a set of a dozen types of trees for you, if they're available, and plants it for you. We make sure that there's no utilities in the way, there's no gas lines, there's no water lines that can be, you know, we pull the missed digs so that we know that we're not going to run into some, something underground that causes a problem if we were to dig up and break it. So there's a lot of work to go into getting that tree planted if we do it. We don't know that occurred, but we didn't find that anything was broken out there at this particular site. But we can issue permits to people to plant trees, and we could have probably issued an amendment to the permit that was pulled for this property to add trees to it. When a new house is built in Royal Oak, it's not on an unusual lot like this, if there is no tree on the frontage, we require the property owner add a tree as part of that permit, and we tell them, you know, you can choose from these type of trees, these are the ones that you can plant, and we will accept it as our tree later on, and if it dies, we'll replant it, part of our tree planting program. So this is not a particular property. There were trees on all three frontages in the past, so we didn't require any trees to be added to the permit when this was initially put together.
I just wonder if there's any stomach at the table for having the property owner remove the conifers and the multi-stem plants, those materials that are not acceptable to us, and allowing any species that are acceptable to us planted in the right-of-way?
I have some stomach.
Sorry?
I have some stomach for it.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what those numbers are as well. I mean, maybe they're all conifers and...
No, just looking at...
No, they're not.
No, there are other trees there as well.
You guys can read it a lot better.
Well, the green ones that look like conifers are conifers, and then those other round things are, I would assume are not conifers.
Are they deciduous trees?
Yeah.
But the chart makes reference to trees that, under the diameter column, that are an M, which is multiple trunks. Are those trees potentially an issue too?
I'm not quite sure. Some of them are probably like birch trees that typically come in a clump, and that's the nature of birch trees, and, you know, I don't think birch trees are on our list of right-of-way trees, but I've seen different types of birch trees planted in the right-of-way, and they seem to be healthy so long as they have enough space around them to grow.
Mayor?
Commissioner Macy?
I guess that's the other thing to Commissioner Douglas's point, is that I think one of the main concerns is the spacing. So maybe also removing some of the, some that were, that caused a problem with the spacing, that we're concerned for that reason as well. I mean, I also, I have some stomach for thinking about this for another meeting, perhaps now that Mr. Farhat knows that we're perhaps not inclined to go forward with the licensing agreement. He can bring forth his best arguments and also maybe work with Mr. Callahan on identifying the trees that would be most likely to be kept if we were going to break it down in that way. It's another thought.
I think for me, there's a couple of different arguments that I heard. You know, I don't know if we want to take a parcel of land and start dictating, like, you know, spending two hours on a private piece of property, because that's also a use of public time to say, this tree, that tree, not this one, this and that. It's not private. Well, okay, fine. It is on public land, that is true. I understand the argument that, you know, are we setting precedent? I don't know that I feel that way, given the uniqueness of the property. Then the only other argument is, are we setting precedent where you just plant it and then pave it over or ask for forgiveness later? You know, I think in this particular case, with the license agreement, if we do decide to do anything, put a sidewalk, do whatever, they're gone. So, you know, there is no permanency to the fact that, you know, if we make a decision to move forward with the license agreement. I think, looking at these trees, I'm on, I don't know when the Google views were captured, September 2018, it looks like, these trees are already decent size, and that was two years ago, a year and a half ago. So I haven't had any complaints from any of the neighbors. So I haven't had any complaints from any of the neighbors that have come out and cried foul and said, you know, "These trees are terrible, and I don't like the screening, and they're causing problems for my neighborhood." So I agree that it puts us in a predicament, but I think this whole, you know, parcel that we're talking about is in itself a predicament, it's just unique. So I don't know that we want to spend hours and hours and hours, but can we just call the vote and see where it's at? There's a motion on the table. Mr. Macy?
I'd add, so maybe no complaints from these neighbors, but we have had complaints in the past from people who are not happy about us pulling up their full-grown trees to put sidewalks there. And this is asking for that to happen again if we ever decide to put sidewalks here. We're giving them the license to this. And I understand the license allows us now, and they can't complain, but I think once all those full trees are up, you're going to hear a lot of neighbors start complaining if we pull them up and put a sidewalk in there. I mean, this is, there's a reason we have a process in the rules, there's a reason we have a right-of-way, this is our own land. So, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Dubbey, you can call the vote. Part of my suggestion on delay is if he doesn't have the votes, he might prefer to wait.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so if someone doesn't withdraw it, then we have to, I mean, the vote's going to happen.
Well, I'm not inclined to withdraw the motion. Now, that doesn't mean we have to move on the first resolution if my motion fails.
That's true.
That's a true statement.
That's a true statement.
So I guess, are there any other comments, discussion?
So the motion is to grant the right-of-way license.
Yeah. Knowing that, they have to maintain it, and if there's ever a decision to, that we need access to that right-of-way, then the homeowner has to make the appropriate accommodations, remove the trees, do whatever at their own expense.
Dave, can I ask you a question? If the motion fails to grant the license agreement, what is the scenario if nobody wants to take up the other motions? The trees are allowed to stay, and they become ours, and it's done with, or...
I can do that to you. I mean, something's going to happen. I think, I think we're going to postpone the decision.
Exactly, to Matt's point.
Mayor, no questions. So if, if we grant the license agreement, and some of these trees fail, who's responsible for maintaining them? Or if they need pruning, does that mean we are going to go in, or we are going to, I mean, how do we go to the property owner and say, "That fir tree is dead, remove it"?
It's a lot more work on staff's time to do that, but the license agreement says that we have the right to tell him that a tree has died, and that he has so many days to remove it under the license agreement. Otherwise, DPS will have it scheduled to be removed, cut down whatever, pruned, whatever type of maintenance needs to be done to it, and the bill goes to the property owner.
Okay.
So they can turn around and bill, bill it to them under the license agreement.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner LaVassar?
And just to follow up on that last point, would the license agreement provide that any such bill would be a lien against the property? Sorry.
I don't think it specifically does, no.
I didn't see a lien provision in there.
No.
Could something be put in there in that respect that provides, a lien could be placed, and it could be collected in the same manner as property taxes?
That would be an easy add, yes.
I will make that supplemental motion to my motion.
amended motion to the original motion by Commissioner LaVassar, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. So right now, we're not, the motion is that in the event that the previous motion is passed, it'll include the language that puts any costs as a lien on the property. So it's not actually approving the, just changing the agreement for approval. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Okay, the amendment to the motion passes, which brings us back to the original motion, which includes the agreement that we have in front of us with the language that any cost spared by the city to enforce the contract will be put as a lien onto the property. Any other discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I think that sways me in favor of the motion. I think that's a, I think that's a good move. I'm, I just feel like I'm in between a rock and a hard place here, and not happy at having been painted into this corner.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I see a hand to the nose, so the motion passes. So we'll enter into the license agreement.
So we'll make the revision and then go from there.
Yep. Thank you.
If I could, Mayor, Mr. Farhat, before you leave, is there any issue, as far as you know, right now with the certificate of occupancy for the house or not? Because I think there was a, there was a question at one time, so...
I was told that the only issue would be refunding the right-of-way bond, which is $7,500 that the engineering department is currently holding, but not holding up a certificate of occupancy now.
Okay. Just wanted to check, so that's all.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farhat. Thank you. All righty. This brings us to item number 12, which is the 2020 Public Right-of-Way Ordinance, first reading. Look at how you stack those ones.
Well, I had to do something and go out with a bang, you know. This has actually been in the works for several years. This code 650, which is originally called the Street and Sidewalk Ordinance, was a 56-page behemoth of things that you couldn't enforce, rules that are superseded by state law, poorly-written violation clauses that couldn't be, you couldn't get anyone to issue a ticket for a violation. Say if you went out and planted 60 trees in the right-of-way, you couldn't issue anybody a ticket for that because the violation clause was so poorly written. We kind of like took a very deep dive into this and got rid of, got it down to 24 pages. And even, we kept some things in here, such as the new news rack ordinance, which, which we haven't had to use in the last eight years because print is dead, from what I've been told, and nobody has newspapers, or flyers, or even the Metro Times. They'd rather be in somebody's doorway instead of in a box on a street. So we listed 11 major changes to this code that changed it so significantly that it's better, what we did is basically, we rewrote it, instead of amending it, to get rid of the old code and adopt this new one. So I'm here to answer any questions, and I don't know that anybody went forward and read the old code or the new code, but I'll do my best to answer any questions. We've been answering some questions from residents online about who's responsible for what, because it's, might have been a little bit clearer in the old code, but it, it's still there in the new code. As far as sidewalks goes, anyways.
Questions for Mr. Callahan.
This was a super boring way to go out with a bang. It's not very banging.
Well, I would hope that everyone had taken this home and read it last night before bed, you know.
Several times.
Several times. Puts you right to sleep. There's nothing that we tried to insert this, into this, that's too controversial. We gave the city engineer some reasonable, some guidelines that he can set reasonable policies for how the right-of-way is used, such as giving people more directions on license agreements, which was written in here before, and now it is. Setting some policies about how people landscape the right-of-way, so that they're not doing things that we wouldn't, that would cause us problems in the future. A lot of people like to put rocks, and bricks, and boulders, and timber walls, and things out there that we've kind of ignored in the past because there was nothing really clear in the ordinance about those things. And now it's very clear, hopefully, that people have some better direction, and some additional policies will come out of this that will be easy to enforce and notify people. And I always want to tell people that whenever we have a code, and there's a set violation that says, "Thou shalt not do X, Y, and Z," we always give people the opportunity to fix this first by giving them a warning in a letter telling me exactly what the problem is, and giving them a reasonable time to fix it before we ever issue anybody a violation citation.
Is there anything in here, Mr. Callahan, that you can foresee causing issues with, like grandfathering? So if somebody did have something, doing for 20 years, 30 years, like, and all of a sudden now, we make these changes, and we're going to go through and say, "Oh, you know, we changed the rules, and clean it up and get it done." Can you talk about those situations, maybe, or what those situations might entail?
Well, you know, we can point out some, some specific examples, but what, what the new code actually better defines in how somebody can move into getting a license agreement? You know, I can go out and show you a 60-inch diameter tree that appro, between the sidewalk and the street, in a very large area, where the property owner's built like a three-foot wall around it. And certainly, the homeowner likes that, that retaining wall, they're taking good care of that retaining wall. It doesn't appear to be a problem with the city's use of the sidewalks or the street, but it's something that we want to make sure that we're never on the hook for. We come through and do a sidewalk program or a road improvement, and we have to take part of that wall down to build our street, we shouldn't be obligated to pay tax dollars, money to go and pay to put it back up, because we did not put it there in the first place. So we have a provision to work with property owners and get them the proper license agreement, and, you know, we more than likely would rebuild that wall, but we would get the property owner to pay for it, the portion that we would have to do. But, and it all depends. Every situation is unique. Every time somebody does an encroachment or something on city property, we have to evaluate whether it's a safety concern, whether it prevents us from doing what we need to do with our own infrastructure, and, you know, it will be up to your brand-new city engineer, who's sitting behind me, to take a look at all of these instances and come back if there's some sort of agreement that needs to be drafted. You know, we have, we work with the people to get those things done.
So it's just adding some clarity and some formalities to what we're actually doing today when these issues pop up, and how we resolve them with the homeowners. At least we have more of a rubric and a standard to go to versus kind of always dealing with everything on a, you know, individual ad hoc basis. There's some tools that allow the city engineer to enter into agreements and, you know, clarify things, so there's no misunderstandings as far as what we need. It doesn't change the fact, like, if, okay, well, we want, you know, we could put the wall back, someone built a wall, but we're just not going to pay for it. It's not your wall, it's on city property, and here's the process, here's the license agreement, and really formalizing those things we're doing today.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Macy?
I'll move approval.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Good job, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Bravo.
I say goodbye to you. It's my last meeting.
The ordinance, people, ordinance is only okay.
For those of you who don't know, Mr. Callahan is retiring after a very illustrious career.
Twenty-five years, man?
Twenty-four years with the City of Royal Oak, nine as the city engineer.
Wow, wow. Is your first trip to Las Vegas?
Will I take a first trip? I leave Friday at 5:00.
Awesome.
But to drive to California from there to go to a wedding, so...
Oh, nice.
Well, you know what, Matt? I mean, hopefully, when you're settled down, you'll come back for a proper ceremony, as opposed to 10:00 at night, you know, after, as Commissioner Macy said, less than spectacular ordinance change. But we appreciate all the work that you've done. It's been a privilege working with you over the last number of years, and I've learned a lot, and I think you've kept me on track to some extent, and, you know, wish you the best in retirement.
Thank you, and please be kind to Holly.
Of course.
She's...
Well, yeah, I can see.
All right.
All right, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, this brings us to our last agenda item tonight, which is item number 13, which is the City Manager Executive Search Update. Mr. Gillum.
Mayor and city commissioners, I had reported at our commission meeting two weeks ago that we had received over 100 applications for the position of city manager. I think the number was 114 applications and 111 actual resumes. Our consultants at GOVHR have been working diligently, going through, and evaluating and reviewing all the applications that came in. James Vetrano from GOVHR had developed a series of recommendations regarding the pool, if you will, and then pursuant to provision in the Open Meetings Act, we did meet in closed session tonight to review the qualifications of the candidates that had submitted their applications in confidence. If the commission is ready tonight, if you could identify the candidates that you believe that Mr. Vetrano and I should make arrangements to have interviewed at a future date that we'll have to work out, then we'll move forward with that. Again, at this point in time, the applicants that we're talking about, that we discussed in closed session, have all submitted their applications in confidence. So in terms of identifying them, for purposes of future interviews, I would ask that you identify them by number. That is the number that we were using in our discussions in closed session. We'll then follow up, or actually, James will then follow up with those candidates to confirm that in fact they're still interested in going through the interview process. If they are, we'll get the interviews scheduled. When the interviews are scheduled, the identities of the candidates will then become public, and any interviews that the commission does for those positions going forward will be held at a public meeting.
I got Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner LaVassar.
So should I make the motion, or do whatever it is we're doing?
Sure.
Okay, so I move that we move forward with seeking interviews with candidates 1, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Port.
Second by Commissioner LaVassar. Discussion? We'll start with Commissioner LaVassar, and then Commissioner Prush.
I'll just want to reiterate what Mr. Gillum indicated. Right now, we are not identifying them by name, but it's one of these things where some people may not want it to be made public that they're pursuing this position. If they accept our invitation, though, for interview, their name will be, become public. They have to be made public. But if any of these six say, "No, I've changed my mind," they will remain confidential, and their names will not be disclosed.
Any other, oh, Commissioner Prush?
The only thing that I would add is that we were very, very impressed, as was our consultant, with the quality of applicants that applied. We knew that because of the, the way Royal Oak has been going the last couple of years, its financial status, exciting things going on in the neighborhoods, in the downtown and so on, that we would get good applicants, but we really, really, really got some fantastic applicants. So we're fairly confident that we're going to end up with a very good city manager, all of us are. And it'll be an interesting process to go through the interview process from this point forward, and as Commissioner LaVassar says, from this point forward, it will be public. But rest assured, we got some really good applicants, so we're very pleased.
Mr. Macy?
I'm just going to follow on to both of those and say, the next piece of this process, as far as we understand it, will be a first-round set of interviews with these six candidates. We're hoping to do them onsite. We do have some, some that are closer than others, but we're hoping to get them all here for that, and then we'll do a second round, possibly in the same period of time and possibly later. I think we're still, our consultants figuring that out for us.
And I think it's also important to add to that, that, you know, as promised, you know, our employee groups and our community members are going to have the opportunity to weigh in and provide their thoughts and input, suggestions, all of that, so we have that information when we're especially whittling down the candidates. So how that process, exactly at what point that happens, and as best to happen, we're going to get a plan from our consultant, and we'll look forward from there. Commissioner Dubbey?
I just want to tack on that. We have this great pool of candidates, which is, I think, an indication that the consultant has very much been worth the investment. There was some scuttlebutt about, you know, that lengthening the process going on, or whether or not that's worth it, you know, why don't we just post for it? And I think that the caliber of candidates in the process thus far have been very much worth that, worth that investment. I think that's worth noting, that, you know, we've kind of pained over that decision, and I feel very confident in where we've landed thus far with that level of input and leadership.
I'll just add too, just if there's any questions, I mean, we had 114 applicants, 116 applicants?
114.
114 applicants. And the numbers that were given today aren't in the order of which they receive, these are just ones that, you know, you know, rose to the top... are just ones that, you know, you know, rose to the top as far as the criteria and things that, you know, collectively the body had, had been looking for, so the numbers are irrelevant. In fact, they're alphabetical order and all of these different things, so there's no significance in the numbers that were proposed today, other than it means something to us and the labeling for the confidential nature of it. So, the motion on the table, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Commissioner Douglas?
I'm, will we adjourn?
The motion by Commissioner Douglas, we have a second by Commissioner Gibbs, discussion. Commissioner LaVassar?
Before we do adjourn, and I'll throw this at Mr. Gillum, is our consulting expecting us to give us some proposed dates for interviews at this point, or is that going to be handled a different way?
Next steps, I think, now that there's been a motion identifying the candidates that the commission would like to interview, I believe Mr. Vetrano will be following up with them, and then confirming that any or all of those six are still interested in the interviews, and then once we have an exact number of candidates for the interviews, then he'll come forward with a recommendation as to the exact process that we're going to follow, and then we'll be asking you for dates.
Okay, so perhaps the next meeting will be setting those dates?
If not before, yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn, any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.